All right, we'd like to welcome everybody to the Darlington City Council Agenda for the regular City Council Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, April the 9th, 2024. We moved it back one week from last week. Welcome our new city interim manager. He'll be with us tonight, six o'clock. And so tonight we'll get started. I'll ask for a call if you'll come and set up work.
That's right. Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for this city that we live in.
Lord Jesus.
We pray gracious Lord that your grace, your love, and your power would be with this council as they meet.
Yes, sir.
Father in heaven, we ask, what are we that you care about? You desire to see in our town schools where our children can enjoy pursuing an education.
Yes.
Where they can play safely in their neighborhoods, where our businesses will flourish, where our faith and our churches unite for your glory.
I believe.
To unite our community. For in Jesus Christ, you have brought down all that divides us. You have broken the power of sin, and you have brought to us the ministry of reconciliation.
Yes.
By which you seek to unite all things. And may this be true for our community. I pray, Father, that as our city council meets tonight, that they will feel the weight of their responsibility, that they will know your wisdom and your guidance, that you would lead our community not to our small and simple plans, but to be that great community that reflects the hope of heaven that we have. That place where we will all live in unity to praise, to love, to rejoice, to know life to the fullest as the gift that you have given to us. So be with our leadership tonight and bless them and guide them. All this we pray, in the name of our precious Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody stand up. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
We are the United States of America, a truly public, religious thing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion for approval of minutes for the March 5th, 2024 regular City Council meeting?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of our March 5th, 2024 regular Council meeting.
I'll second. Ms. Backus, Mr. Seager's good. Motion's carried. Thank you. Do you have a motion for approval of March 20th, 2024 special City Council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from our March 20th, 2024 special Council meeting.
Second.
Mr. Belli, Backus, Mr. Seager's good. Motion's carried. Thank you. Do you have a motion for approval of March 26th, 2024 special Council meetings?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of our March 26th, 2024 special Council meeting.
Second.
Mr. Men, Ms. Backus, Mr. Seager's, hi. Motion's carried. All right, citizens wishing to give comment, please remember assist a comment, not discussion back and forth. If you needed us to call you, I'd ask you to leave your number up here for us. You have five minutes. Adrian Street.
I personally made the decision on branch of Darlington was garbage and wasn't made into citizens' interest and more self-interest and easy cash. I think that St. John's is next, and I think everyone is going to be compliant, behave three meals a day in our history, which really matters to me. I think that full trades apart for courthouse, I think our old courthouse should be made into Darlington Old historic Darlington Hotel, which burned down. I think, I think it's ugly, our courthouse is ugly, but that's why we pay y'all to make it prettier. But it seems like all the solutions isn't for the citizens' interests. And all I'm saying is try to be better and be unique. I heard that South Carolina found 1.8 billion. I think y'all should tell our representatives to invest in Lake Darco and St. John's, which would actually build plans for actually utilizing homeowners to benefit these plans, like for work, getting 40 hours a week. And St. John just got theaters in it, which we could open them back up, bring the public back to life. I think there's all kinds of many ideas, including a new plans for a pet shelter in there, which we would make in a nonprofit, would make this place function. But there's all kinds of ideas we could put in that. And Lake Darco, we can make into a basically, if you haven't been to Fantasy Lake or Lake Jacasi, it's a water park. If we built something like that in Darlington, we could stand out and benefit from it. That's what I think. And I also think if we were smart, we would request the citizens to bring a scrap, and we would discount them tickets and everything we sell there. And also, you know, I think about St. John's, we're getting a new courthouse. We rotate the old courthouse where we could have the car show around the old courthouse. And the new courthouse, we could use St. John's parking lot, fill it in there with some fun activities for the community, including something to bring the community together so they can relate to one another. That's all I'm saying. Because another thing I want to close this out with, but if we haven't noticed, there's been a lot of shootings lately, and it don't seem like there's nothing being done. And a lot of people get hurt, not mention my nonprofit last week, got some stuff, somebody came out there with some counterfeit cash, they got it. Now, I made a statement to Jim Davis, the police chief in Darlington, but he said he wanted no collection agency, anything he could get me for not having a yard sale license. So why would I pay for a yard sale license when I can't, they can't stop the criminals? You know what I mean? I ain't got nothing against him, but I just, there's, I got the guy's information, his name, everything, but I'm screwed out my money. You know what I mean? It's just, it's dumb. And a lot of other people have the same issues. And then when they go to call the cops, the cops want to come press them about it. But I ain't been compliant with it. I ain't getting a yard sale license. And I told them that. So I don't make enough from that. You know what I'm saying? Everything that we fund, it basically, from my landings, it goes from, we get stuff from auctions, stuff donated to us, which we sell for cheaper for the price of our consumer. Now that goes into taking care of our landings, getting bins down, and basically making sure they're clean because the county is not taken care of. You look at Naughty Pines Road, individual on Facebook, he dumped on it. Well, the county took credit. They didn't do it. We did. Our group did. We funded this project just like that to be able to do stuff like that. And I'm saying that Darco and St. John, we can benefit if we utilize them buildings. Same thing with our courthouse. It might be old and ugly, but we can make it pretty. That's it. That's all I was gonna say. And I think y'all should look to that 1.8 billion to benefit Darlington, ask our representatives for it. Because they're looking to put plans and putting it places, and they don't know where to put it. I think Darlington would be very beneficial. Because everyone's flocking and knowing you come here.
Sounds great. And I truly appreciate everything that you're coming forth and sharing with us as, as your ideas. But I want you to do, be aware that we are taking steps to make it pretty, using your words. That's what, that's what the master plan is all about.
I think, I think the master plan should be about citizens.
Did you, did you attend the, the, the public meeting we had so that you could give your input for the master plan? Yeah, it was advertised for weeks. So that's what I just want you to be aware.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. We had it right there at the recreation on, it's not Stanley, it's on
I think, I think we get more advertising for Darco. Darlington is, is great.
Yeah. But anyway, I just wanted you to be aware. And I also wanted to point out that Lake Darco, and I think Naughty Pines, those are county.
Well, Lake Darco is just, it's a lake that you gotta watch out.
What I want you to understand, that it is county. And we would be kind of overstepping our bounds to use money for the county when you have so eloquently pointed out that we need money for our city.
I agree.
Okay. So that's all I want you to know.
Thank you, Mr. Street.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. But I appreciate it so much.
If you want to have a discussion with us, please, we've got a lot to cover. We'll be here all night talking back and forth. This is comment on. So if you would just come up and provide your comments, we appreciate it. Andrew Watkins.
Andrew.
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 Andrew Watson. Thank you, sweetheart.
This won't take long. Thank y'all for your time. I own the venue out there on 151. And I know y'all have a parcel of land beside, your land joins my land at the venue. I own the venue right beside the Mayflower.
Oh.
The venue 151. It's small. It's acre and a half. If y'all have any idea at all about the land that y'all have, like maybe selling like pieces of it, I would really be interested in buying some. Not all, can't afford it all, but whatever you'd be willing to cut out. It would make my venue bigger. At least I could have bigger.
Right.
But when they call me like for high school reunions and stuff like that, I can't do it. I'm not big enough. If y'all could help me out. Anyway, that's all I got.
I think in our last meeting, that's what we voted on, to put it up.
Yeah, he's in residence.
No, I can't buy it all. I'm, I'm just a part. Just a small. Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Gaines.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm coming to y'all tonight to talk to you about a lot at 405 Second Street. We were looking at building a house on that lot. We spoke to Ms. Sheila months ago about it. She said we couldn't build on it because of 40-foot wide lot. I know that the master plan is supposed to be addressing some of those issues. Didn't know exactly when that was going to take place. So I talked to Sheila and asked her what our options were. She said we could go before BZA. So we paid our $300, went for the BZA last month, the 18th of March, presented it to the BZA Board of Appeals. They approved it. Said it was fine that, you know, President said, so, you know, people been, they've been allowing people to do stuff on smaller lots, so they weren't going to deny ours. So they approved it. So I called Sheila the next day to find out exactly what was going on, what we needed to do to move forward, and was informed that it was supposedly an illegal meeting or something. I don't know. I think my understanding is the agenda wasn't posted 24 hours in advance. So my question was, you know, it's been three weeks. We're ready to move forward, build a house. We were approved by BZA to build on the lot. And I understand it's in the master plan, but, you know, I don't know how long it's going to take for all that to happen. So if we could do, the problem was posting the agenda 24 hours in advance. Why would we post an agenda for 24 hours unless have another meeting? If that's what we got to do. We paid our $300. I've talked to the chairman of the BZA, and he said that, you know, they were willing to have another meeting. But I feel like we need to be moving on with it. I mean, we're trying to build a house, and we're being held up. So I was coming to y'all to talk to y'all tonight to see, you know, if we could try to do something to get the process moving. And I know, I talked to Ms. Mary Morgan before the meeting, and she kind of gave me some information about what they were proposing. I don't know how long that'll take, but we're ready to start building. I mean, if it comes before y'all, then that's two or three more months. We could have that house finished in two or three months. So anyway, I wanted to kind of see what we could do to try to get the ball moving on. All right? Appreciate y'all having me on.
Mr. Hines.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My address is 901 South Main Street. I've been there for 30 years. And for 30 years, they have been picking up my trash. I only have debris maybe three times a year. And right now, I'm only working four days a month. So my trash pickup debris, I mean, the trash pickup is only once a month. And I'm paying 58, 60 a month. And I was told in December after 30 years that they don't pick up debris. And I, I put debris out. It's so little bit, they pass it by every time. So I want y'all to consider that because I'm paying for it. I don't know what I'm paying 58, 60 a month for, just for picking up my trash one time a month. So I need to reconsider that and pick up the little bit of debris I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Jackson, good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. One I wanted to talk to, to, not about respect. Respect for each and every one of us. We all deserve this. Regardless of what stage of life we in, whether we rich, middle class, or poor. This common respect, and even in a, a meeting, having that common decent respect, not to overtalk somebody and not to, how to say it, spazz out, as kids say, on Facebook, because they are watching y'all. They're watching y'all, and they take it in heart how to conduct themselves as they grow older. Now, as Vice President of DDR, I do share a concern for the city. I want the city to grow and be productive and prosperous. But I had ran for school board in 2022, and my platform was lead to serve. You have to be a leader to serve everybody, regardless of race, gender, and nationality, and their position in life. But this place, this plain common respect. I want to share about a little story, a childhood story. When you're trying to persuade someone, it was about the sun and the wind. The sun, the wind said, I'm going to make this man take off his coat. And the wind, and the sun said, I'm going to persuade him. And the sun went out by persuasion. You can't force nobody to change their heart, and whether they racist or nothing, but you can take a small step and be respectful to all manner, regardless of how they feel, and regardless of their position and what they stand on. That's all I want to say.
Ms. Backus.
So I've been getting several phone calls from citizens in Darlington about trash, debris, things that they're putting out on the street to be picked up. And when they're calling the street and sanitation department, they're getting a response back from the person that's answering the phone that we don't pick that up. We don't pick up trash, or limbs, or we don't pick up items you put on the street. Well, I want you to know, and this council need to, not consider, uphold what we actually voted to do in 2022. And I'm going to hand this to every council member, so you can read it for yourself. And I've given it to Sean, and Sean gives it back to citizens. So they can read it for theyself. Because we did vote for citizens for this trash to be picked up. Now, whether they changed it, whether the city manager actually did his job and changed the ordinance or not, citizens are paying to have this trash picked up. In April 13, 2022, 2020, when we did our budget, Alice Gane, which is sitting at the back of the room, was over street and sanitation department. And I'm just going to give you a couple of sentences out of this, so you, you can read it for yourself. When Alice presented, Alice said to council, we have 2,530 residents, residential customers, that we're charging $22.50. And that's not just for road cars. That is for yard debris as well. Mr. Gaines said, everybody's complaining about yard debris being picked up. They put furniture and other items beside the roads. Mr. Gaines said, we propose this to go up to $28.50 to pick up anything they put outside the road. There was much conversation about this from this council. We discussed picking it up. The main objective was, and the main issue of it was, we were dumping pro, they dump garbage on vacant lots. That was the conversation. In order to stop them from dumping it on vacant lots, we would raise your bill $6. $4 for carts, $2 to pick up whatever you put on the street. Because if you don't, if we didn't do that, people would continue to put it on other people's vacant lots. And we had no way of collecting for the trash that's being dumped on these lots. Because if I, if you dump something on somebody else's lot, how we, we had no way of holding that person accountable for that trash on their lot. So we said we would go up on your rate. That way, if they put something on the street, we would pick it up. Now, council, now the street and sanitation department, young lady is telling citizens, we're not going to pick up your debris. We're not going to pick up your trash, when you're already paying for this to be picked up. And the city need to honor what we voted on. The county, the county, this prior city manager did not do his job and changed the ordinance. You can enforce the ordinance when we voted on it. And just because they didn't change it, doesn't mean it's not so. We're taking people's money. We are obligated to do what we said we were going to do. And here it is, in black and white. Read it for yourself. I'm not making it up. Mr. Gaines said, right now, the whole thing is, we won't, we wind up having to pick up this stuff, and it's costing us money. So if we go up on this sanitation and start picking it up, at least it's not costing the city that much money. And we all agreed to go up, Curtis Boyd, Mayor Boyd said, if they go up 60% like Mr. Kinsong, use, we'll take it up to $36. He said his proposal on that was to fine the people. If they put debris beside the road, give them seven days to move it, and then if they don't move it in seven days, put a $100 fine on their water bill. Council did not agree with that. We said we would raise it $6. So I don't understand, with this right here, that we voted on, this council is not upholding what we voted on. And that's dead wrong. Citizens are paying for this.
Thank you, Ms. Backus. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. All right, new business. Proclamation. Recognizing the nation as sexual assault awareness month. That's Mrs. Problem Creator. All right. Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you. I'm standing in for the coalition.
Okay, do you have some papers you want to hand out?
To the, to you and to the. Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Robin Woods with Durant Children's Center, and I'm a part of the PD Coalition, and I'm standing in for them. And I have brought you brochures about what we do at the Durant Center, which is a child advocacy center, and with our PD Coalition, where we do with victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, where I deal with the children, they deal with the adults. And I also have some, just different kind of brochures and some, Mr. Bill, how are you? Been a while. Some, two, sorry. I got an extra one just in case. Just stuck together. You can have two, so should the mayor. Some cards for our people there in our Durant Center and Hartsville for our advocate and our therapist. We're doing free therapy for kids that have been abused or neglected. And so that's very helpful for them, and we appreciate it. And this is also Child Abuse Awareness Month and a Child Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. You'll see a lot of peels around and blue and everything, so, and recognition of that, so.
I'll leave this for you. I appreciate you coming tonight. This is the City of Darlington Proclamation, April 2020, where sexual assault affects adults and children in the PD region, not only as a victim survivors, but also as family members, loved ones, friends, neighbors, or coworkers of a victim. And whereas sexual assault is one of the most devastating crimes in our society today, with victims often suffering lifelong pain from physical injury and serious emotional trauma. And whereas volunteers and service providers in our communities are dedicated to providing care to sexual assault survivors through 24-hour hotlines, counseling, support groups, advocacy, medical care and education. And whereas the 2024 Observance of Sexual Assault Awareness Month encourages people to learn more about sexual violence and its prevention, and how to help survivors heal from this personal violation. Now therefore, I, Curtis Boyd, Mayor of the City of Darlington, in the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 24th as Sexual Assault Awareness Month throughout the PD region, and encourage all citizens to work together to prevent sexual assault and ensure a life free from harm for the residents of the PD region. And so when I always read this, I always tell people that if you're living in a situation that someone's abusing you, please know that there's people out here that will stand up for you and help you. And so I've known people that were in those positions, and we always try to help them, and try to get them, get them to the place that they need to be. It ranges from all, all kinds, like you said. So for children, everything else, it doesn't necessarily have to just be that you are an adult male sexually assaulting a woman. A woman can do it back to the man. And children and all kinds of things are going on in this crazy world today. Satan has taken over, and it's been given reign, but our Lord Jesus Christ will one day come over and take it up. So until then, if you know anybody that's, that is being abused, or you've been abused, please make sure you pull somebody to the side, let them know. And there's always someone there to help.
PD Coalition is in all of the counties in the PD, and the Durant Center. We have centers in Sumter, Hartsville, and Florence. So there's always somebody that can help you out. Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all.
Fair Housing Resolution. I'm not sure if there's anybody here for that. The Fair Housing Resolution is for April 2024, whereas the City of Darlington desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to attain a decent, safe, and sound living environment. And whereas the City of Darlington rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, or a family status in the sale, rental, or provision of other housing services. And whereas the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1989, and whereas April is recognized nationally as Fair Housing Month. Now therefore, being resolved that the City of Darlington does designate April 2024 as Fair Housing Month, adopted this ninth day of April 2024 by the Darlington City Council. Okay. Thank you. That's new business. Approval of Darlington Reliance Master Plan, Mr. Gill.
Thank you. Can you get the screen lowered a little bit? Turn a few of these lights off. Good evening. Thank y'all. We're really excited to present the master plan to y'all tonight for approval. Joseph, you can go ahead and just click on through. I know you guys are very well acquainted with what's in the master plan. You've had it for a couple of weeks now, but you've also come to several of our meetings and participated. And we've had really groundbreaking work throughout the community. So what I'm going to go over tonight is I'm going to quickly, quickly go over the goal statement, the concept statement, the guiding principles, the overarching recommendations, and then after, and which you've all seen before. After that, I'm going to get to the, the top five priorities as they were expressed to us by the Planning Commission. We met with the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago, and they have forwarded a recommendation to y'all to adopt the master plan. But they also But they also wanted y'all to know some of the things that they felt like were most important in the master plan. So we're gonna tell you what their top five priorities are. And then I'm gonna tell you what the team's other five top priorities are. And then we're gonna talk about a couple of special projects. So really quickly, you know, it's, it's important to remember that in a city, everything is connected. You've got to look at every aspect of the city to do a complete and comprehensive master plan. I am very pleased and proud of what would you, if you follow this master plan, you will have successes in your city. So just go back to the goal statement that came out of that first public workshop. I'm gonna read it. "The goal was to intentionally foster a progressive, unified, vibrant, and safe community with a variety of places to live, housing, shop and play, recreation, with walkable neighborhoods, beautiful parks, and supportive schools." And then out of that, we came up with a concept statement in our design charade that kind of supported that, which was develop a long-term vision for the community with a focus on a strong public realm, parks, trails, and streets, cohesive neighborhoods, and the economic vitality of the core, while also looking for short-term reachable victories. So through that design charade, we came up with our twelve guiding principles. I'm not gonna go over those. You've seen these. Y'all are all very familiar with them, but the guiding principles became kind of the, the building block of our master plan. And from the guiding principles, we went on to our overarching recommendations, which we go into in, in great detail in the master plan document. But, um, so we addressed each one of these overarching recommendations in the plan. So the top five priorities as expressed by the planning commission were, number one, major revisions to zoning ordinance. Number two, to hire a city engineer. Number three, establish a Main Street program and hire a manager. Number four, establish a parks department and hire a director. And number five, implement a strategy for annexation. So major revisions to the zoning ordinance. We've outlined already several things that we've identified that need to be changed in zoning ordinance. You heard one of those in, in public comment tonight, dealing with the, the non-conforming lots. And I have to say that granting a variance for one non-conforming lot is really not an appropriate thing to do. It doesn't meet the hardship definition. Changing the ordinance so that all of those non-conforming lots are conforming is the thing to do. And we're actually gonna be meeting with the planning commission next week to look at modifications to the zoning ordinance to accommodate that. But we've identified several things that need to happen in the zoning ordinance. A lot of those are fairly simple fixes. I don't, I think it's only really a few month process to have the entire ordinance revised. So that's one thing. The second thing was to hire a city engineer. You guys do have a consulting engineer that, that works with the city, but we really feel like it's important that you actually have a city engineer on staff working for you day in and day out. Once you get that city engineer on staff, we think it's really important that you develop a water and sewer master plan, and you develop a stormwater master plan. And also, need to mention, this was one revision that the planning commission asked us to make to the master plan. We included developing a stormwater master plan, but we never actually spelled out to develop the water and sewer master plan. And they suggested that revision to the master plan. We made that revision the very next day. It was an excellent suggestion. But as you're looking at growth in your community, those are two things that you've really gotta take a hard look at and understand. The next thing was establishing a Main Street program and hiring a Main Street manager. And you guys have seen the success that Florence has experienced with their Main Street program and, and the, the changes that have happened in that city. And I think that can happen here, but it's not a quick fix. It's, it's a long haul. It takes years to do. It takes, it takes being, you know, diligent. But you've gotta start somewhere. And starting a Main Street program, bringing on a Main Street manager is the first step toward that. There are a lot of other things in the master plan that can happen as a result of that action. So things like, you know, potential improvements to the public square, developing design guidelines for your community, providing incentives for local and neighborhood businesses, bringing structures back to their original beauty that, that don't look really, don't look great right now. Repurposing buildings and expanding the core commercial district, which is something else we're recommending through zoning to help protect your core. Developing a campaign to promote a new community brand. I know, you know, talking about the logo is actually on your agenda tonight. That's something that really should be done through that Main Street program. And then lastly, establish a program that encourages public art in all forms throughout the community. Those are all things that could happen as a kind of a byproduct of that Main Street program. The fourth, and we've also talked about that, that Main Street program could be housed in the old Carnegie Library. It's a beautiful building. It's on Main Street. The Main Street program needs to be on Main Street. And we see that as a, a great opportunity for adaptive reuse of that building. And then also, this is, you know, just from the master plan, the ideas that we came up with for revitalizing the square, all those things would happen under the Main Street program. So the fourth thing was establish a parks department and hire a director. And you've, you've heard me say this before, this is not a parks and recreation department. This is a parks department. The county does a fantastic job with their recreation program. And we're not wanting to take away from that. But there are some, you know, kind of unusual things that are going on between the city and the county as far as the maintenance of your existing parks. I know the city provides staff to the county to help maintain parks. So what we would like to see, and also, you know, great respect for the recreation program, but they're not really interested in maintaining passive parks. They're interested in maintaining sports fields. So there's a difference in when you're talking about a parks department and what they would be maintaining. So we would love to see y'all establish a parks department, hire a director. Also, the, the county has never done a, a parks and recreation needs assessment study. We would like to see y'all partner with the county to have that kind of a study done once you have somebody on board. And then, things like maintenance of the streetscapes and your entrance signs and things like that could then go to the parks department instead of, as it is right now, being a part of streets and sanitation. So I think there could be some real benefits to having that parks department as part of your city. The, and then, you know, we've talked about in the master plan, we talked about the greenway and pedestrian network. We talked about the idea of a park being, you can keep going, Joseph. A park being within a ten-minute, about ten-minute walk of every resident in the city. Those are the kinds of things that you can start looking at implementing once you have that parks department and, and the leadership within that department. The last thing we talked about with them as a priority was implementing a strategy for annexation. You want Darlington to grow, but you wanna have control over that growth. And as long as things are in the county, you don't control them. And you've got some parcels primarily in the, the southeast side of town and, and on the east side of town, there are some large parcels that we think are primed for development, and we would like to see those under the control of the city. You also have a lot of residents who live primarily on the north side of the city, a little bit on the west side. They live in established neighborhoods and communities, but they're in the county. That means they're not receiving any of the services from the city, including fire protection, police protection, trash pickup, things like that. Adding those neighborhoods to the city, I think, would be of great benefit to everyone. So then moving on, the team had a few things that we felt like were also priorities. Not taking away from what the planning commission said. I actually agree with every one of their choices of, of their top five. But we felt like kind of the, the next top five, one is to do a housing assessment. Affordable housing, attainable housing in this community is, is a real challenge. It's something that needs a lot of attention. But until you really do this housing needs assessment, you really don't know the, the depth of that need. And you really can't address that need specifically until you have this housing assessment done. So that's one thing. The other thing is historic preservation. In our master plan, we talk about the creation of some new historic districts. We talk about expansion of some historic districts. We think, that's actually fairly low hanging fruit for y'all. We'd like to see you pay some attention to that. Third, property acquisition. I would love to see the, the city develop a strategy and develop a budget so that you can proactively acquire property that may be property to use for parks. It may be for infill housing or other needs that the city may have. So it's just kind of like looking for those opportunities. And when they do come along, you're prepared and you're ready to, to act on them. Number four, new fire station. I met with your fire chief. I've toured the facilities. And it's, it's, it needs to be replaced. It's in, it's in pretty sad shape. It's, it's old. There's a lot of deferred maintenance. He can barely get his equipment in those bays. We would love to see y'all have a new fire station. And I asked him, I was like, you know, do you want two fire stations? And he said, no, one is all he needs to cover the city. He can cover it effectively with one good fire station. We've identified a site on Orange Street, just a couple of blocks from here, that would, we think would work great. The chief loved that site. He felt like it would be great for him as far as access. So we would love to see y'all pursue a new fire station. At some point in time, after you have the new fire station, we would love to see y'all replace city hall. This, this building, I think, is kind of, it's, it's served its purpose. And I think it's time to, to kind of go on. Having, you know, better council chambers for public meetings would be great. Better office space for your staff would be great. We would like to see that new city hall built on this same site. You need to be part of your core. You need to be part of your downtown. You need to be visible in the community. So we would see that as, as kind of our, our fifth priority in our, our second tier. We did, we did a lot of assessment ourselves of, of the neighborhoods, and we found a lot of shortcomings in those neighborhoods. They need to be addressed over time. A lot of that has to do with substandard housing, vacant lots, and, hallelujah. Those, those things need to be addressed for the, for the good of your community. You can just, we can just kind of, I've talked enough, Joseph. You can just kind of plow through those. So two other special projects that we wanted to talk about. So these are things that, that the city doesn't control per se, because it's not your land. But Brunson Dargan, as y'all know, is, is gone now. And we've met with the school board, we've met with the school, the school superintendent about ideas for the redevelopment of Brunson Dargan. Joseph, you can go ahead and click. So this is a concept that we did, and this was basically blessed by the school board, and they actually asked us to please go find developers that can do this. So this concept, which Joseph drew, by the way, this approaches Brunson Dargan from the viewpoint of, of a pocket neighborhood. So these are small lots, single-family detached homes. We've got about twenty-two acres there. We've got a hundred and thirty-eight lots with fifty percent open space. So, cause they're kind of clustered together around usable open space. What the school board would like to do is, they would like to be able to actually own a few of these homes. Most of them would be sold, some at workforce rate, some at market rate. But some the school board would actually own so that they could then rent them to teachers at much reduced rates, which would really help them with recruitment and retention. But it also provides a really good, solid new neighborhood in the city of Darlington. The thing is, you can't build this neighborhood in the city of Darlington right now. Your zoning ordinance doesn't support it. So that's one of the things in, in looking at the rewrite of your zoning ordinance is to allow developments like this to happen. So we actually think this would be a great model for, for what could be done once that zoning ordinance is, is changed. The second thing is St. John's. As y'all know, St. John's is gonna stop being a school after this term. It's a beautiful set of buildings. They're historic. They're on the National Register. You know, they, they need to stay. They need to be adaptively reused. And we've also met with the school board about these. Go ahead to the next one. This is another, Joseph drew this concept too. But this is a concept that we did, looking at kind of adaptive reuse of those buildings. This is retaining all of the buildings except for cafeteria. It is not on the National Register. Even Christina Butler, our historic preservation consultant, felt like that that building could go. And it does some things for the campus that actually makes it better once it's gone. It's a building that would be really difficult to reuse just because of ceiling heights and column spacings and, and things like that. But we see several possibilities for adaptive reuse. So in the master plan, we were not very prescriptive because we basically didn't wanna rule out any possibilities. But we would like to see a portion of this turned back into city park. Historically, it was park, and we'd like to see that again. So those are two things that we really wanna, I guess what I'm saying is, I want y'all to really do what you can to, to cooperate with the school board and to be a help to them, to help to move these two initiatives forward. I think that it'd be great benefit to the community to do so. So with that, I'll take any questions, but I'm really looking forward to you guys voting to adopt the master plan. And, oh, one other thing, let me, let me say, there's a note down at the bottom that reminded me. There will be a companion document to the master plan coming out in the next few weeks. We didn't really start this process until we had a master plan. But Withers Rabinell, our, our partners on this project, they're gonna be working on a, another document that's gonna outline possible funding opportunities, grant opportunities, things like that, to address things in the master plan. So that document, it's not, it's not actually part of the master plan per se, but it's a tool for y'all and staff to use as you move forward to implement the master plan.
Bill, you did a presentation, but you know, we've had numerous conversations, so you have answered most of my questions. I've seen that this has been, also the things that I truly would love to see for the area that I, that I represent are included and addressed, so I most certainly want us to move forward.
Play a motion?
I truly can make it more certain that we have now master plan as presented.
Bill, I guess the reality is there's some things that will happen fairly quickly. They'll make the other things fifteen, twenty years later.
Exactly. It is, it is a long-term view. But also, I encourage y'all to, don't wait twenty years before you update this master plan.
I'd make a motion that the City of Darlington, the Darlington Relisons Master Plan.
We actually need a second.
You're, I was seconded then. You're down to second it now. Yours morphed into a motion.
Mr. Craven, Ms. Backus, Sigur, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bill.
I think I've been told to stay here for a little while.
Contract amendment of zoning ordinance over half. Mr. Bill?
So in, in conversations with, with Mary Morgan through this process, and also the fact that planning commission stated that their top priority was changes to the zoning ordinance, and realizing also that y'all do have, have issues that, that need to be addressed sooner rather than later, Mary Morgan asked me for a proposal that could be done as an amendment to our existing contract, to go ahead and immediately start looking at a rewrite to your zoning ordinance. And we were able to give a really good thinking for this, quite honestly, because we've already done the front-end work. We already know a lot of the things that need to be changed, we already know the city, we already know the staff, we know y'all. So there are a lot of, of, a lot of front-end work that we're, we would not have to do, that we would have to do in, in other cities. So we prepared a contract amendment. So any questions about that?
It was also the savings from using Beal?
Yes, that's another thing. As y'all remember, in the original contract, we had a set aside of $15,000 of, if it was hourly, not to exceed, for Beal Engineering, who was a transportation planner. Just because of the things, the way things went with the master plan, we did not need to use Beal Engineering as part of the master plan. So that was $15,000 of the master plan fee that, that was not spent. So that gives a little bit of, of a boost to this effort.
Okay, so this, just want to make clear, all of the, the suggestions about the changes and, and new ordinances, SGA-NW will do it?
Yes.
Not our coding department.
Yes. We will completely rewrite the zoning ordinance, pretty much.
Sort of as to rate the backups?
Yes, yes, and, and as outlined in the, in the master plan.
Yeah, I mean about things like signage and things like that, that all under the zone?
Yeah. I'll tell you, and I'm, I'm not saying this in jest, I'm saying this in all honesty, about the only parts of the, of the ordinance that we really won't touch are communication towers and sexually oriented businesses.
I'm not going to touch that.
I had to hear that.
So you'll just be rewriting the zoning ordinances as well, or which order, just the zoning ordinance?
The zoning ordinance.
What is left that would not be encompassed in the zoning ordinance, just for general information?
So one of the things that we've talked about incorporating into the zoning ordinance is some, some very clear kind of process guidelines for, you know, when things come before planning commission, when things come before the BCA, things like that, so that the processes are clearer. So that is something that we would adopt as part of it. We'll also look at things that, that may be part of your subdivision regulations that, that may be happier living in the zoning ordinance. But it's a pretty comprehensive look.
You did, you said that we have, if I recall, it was a $30,000 amendment, but is the 15 that's left in the budget, or will be applied to that 30,000?
Yes. So you're really, technically looking at a $15,000 increase, new money?
Well, that was what I was going to ask about, so that's, you answered that right off the bat, making it from 30,000 to 15.
I have one question, Mr. Millie. Mr. Teller, at, at this rate, are we required to have an additional bid, since it's already in there, before?
No, you're, you're fine with that.
I'm making the motion that we amend the existing contract that we have with Bill Eubanks and the others, organization and funded SGA/NW, and amend that contract to include the revised, revisement of the zoning ordinance for an additional sum of $15,000.
Second.
Mr. Craven, Ms. Backus, Sigur, motion is carried.
Thank you. We will start on that process immediately.
Okay, thank you. All right, I guess I made a few people nervous when I asked to put discussion regarding the city logo. We have, Mr. Banks brought it up, we have, I think, multiple ones out there that we use. I believe that the one you got on the screen with the tree and, see the drawing below that is one of the main ones that we use for this moment. I'm not, I'm not looking to change it or anything at this moment, just trying to see if council could agree on what you would like to be consistent with right this moment to make sure it's the same everywhere, if you're going to add, or you'd like to have one of the other ones different. And where we're being, start being consistent with it is what I was wanting to try to find out, as we move forward with more publicity and stuff going on.
Tell me, what happened? I, I mean, to even cause this discussion, there were some other kind of logo presented somewhere?
Mr. Banks brought it up at the meeting, that our logos are all out there.
Right.
And we are going to be putting out more information, trying to get information out to everybody, so we're, we know what, make sure the website's the same, make sure trucks are the same, make sure front doors are the same, so before we try, trying to make sure that somebody prints a decal, which decal would you like printed? Five years down the road, or a year down the road, if you want to change it, and we change it for this moment. Would you like to be consistent with one?
So, did we have a logo at all? I mean, besides the tree, besides the tree, did we have some kind of logo?
So, yeah, so the Darlington Oak is your, that is your logo. The difference is, there are, I think there are some older versions that, where it says "the city of" is included or not included, and it may be above the logo, it may be below the logo. So there are just some variations. So I, I think the mayor's correct, that, you know, anything that y'all do, if you're sticking it on a truck, on a door, on a sign, it should be consistent. So I think the, y'all have something with it on it?
Here.
This one, that says "the city of Darlington" in the, the Serif font, and then "South Carolina" in script below it, and then just the Oak, that seems to be the one that's in, that's in most common usage. But there are even, this is a city truck, and this logo at the top says "city of," and then says "Darlington" below, and then "South Carolina." So the one on the city truck is different than this one. It's just, it's a variation.
Okay.
So...
On the other, on the other side, I think there was something.
Yeah, this was when we were talking about like possible new logos. But I think right now, y'all are just talking about being consistent with your existing one. So I would think, if y'all are going to vote on anything, I would say this seems to be the, the one that's in most common usage and...
Second?
Yes.
Do, but do we need to come up with something? Do we need to say something like, "it's a great day in Darlington," or any, anything else that, that might be appropriate?
I think that's enough what we choose.
I, I think developing a different brand is, I mean, that is a, that is a separate process that actually needs a lot of in-depth study and a lot of public input. And I would, I would defer that decision until you have your Main Street program up and running and, and let the Main Street program be part of that process.
And like, right now, we're not as approval of PD, but we really don't, I don't know that we really post that anywhere per se, or just looking at the city logo, or are you consistent with, if I'm consistent with the one he pointed out. Again, Main Street or somebody else can come up with a logo, or slogan, or whatever else, you know, if we want to change something, read it up later.
With where we are, do we need to spend money changing a few trucks to get to uniformity, or do we need to wait until we have got a proposal for a logo?
I can't really answer that question, because I don't know how much those decals cost, and I don't know your city budget. But I think if it's, if it's fairly low hanging fruit, if it's not very expensive and, and you've got the money in your budget, I think it'd be great to have that consistency across everything in the city. Is it the end of the world if you don't? No.
My question was not run out and change every truck we got at this moment, every sign at Interestway, or, and just turn the whole upside down, basket upside down. If you go to change something, or you go to post something on social media, you print something on newspaper from here out, until we decide to change it, which one would you like to use?
Yeah, I, I do think the most important thing is from this, like, from this point forward, it's consistent.
Yes. See, that's, we could decide that, right, council?
Would you like to stay with the one that we're currently using?
We got the one we have, and just...
So when they post stuff out, it can be consistent?
You say, "stay with the one we have," and you refer to the one that has "the city of" above?
No, the other one, he's saying, "we use it more of the city of Darlington."
The city of Darlington, like this one.
Or is the city of Darlington at the, below the tree? Do we need to vote on that, or is everybody just fine with it? Recognizing that would be better to vote on?
Okay, we just...
Motion to keep the city of Darlington below the tree logo, the, the tree logo?
Yes.
I get a motion for that?
Can I just say, so move? No.
You want to make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we be consistent with our, with the logo that we have here that says "with the tree" and "under the tree," "city of Darlington, South Carolina."
Second?
I approve the consistency, but I'd like to know what it's going to cost for. I don't know how many trucks we got that need to be modified.
We're not talking about doing it right away. We just want to...
We're not willing to change.
Whenever we get to that call.
Not voting to spend money?
No. It's not about money or like that, y'all.
Ms. Backus, Sigur, motion is carried. We're, we're not willing to run out, as I said, run out and change everywhere at this moment, but if they needed a new logo on the truck, when they get ready to change it, that's the one they put on, puts on the website, that's the one that we put out there. Be consistent across the board with that. So we're going to start being stable. Thank you. All right, request from the Chamber of Commerce for financial assistance with the 2024 fireworks Freedom Fest.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Amanda Boyden, I am the current chairperson for the Board of Director for the Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce. This is our, excuse me, new executive administrative assistant, Julia Gaining. She's passing out some folders for you guys, where she's going to cover real quickly what it is that we're asking for, for this year. And there's also some photos in there from last year's events. Julia?
Okay. The Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce says Freedom Fest is a large Independence Day celebration that's held every year in Darlington. It takes place a Saturday before the Fourth of July in hopes of gaining more attendance from tourists whose town's Fourth of July celebrations are held during the day of the Fourth. Freedom Fest is Darlington Chamber's largest event, it's very well attended. Every year, it becomes more popular among citizens and tourists. Last year, Freedom Fest attracted a crowd of an estimated 5,000 people. Our mission is to provide entertainment rides, t-shirts, and a fantastic fireworks show free for all ages. This year's event will be held on June 29, 2024, on the Darlington Square. It will include a DJ, amusement rides, food and retail vendors, t-shirt giveaways, 50/50 raffle with door prizes, and we'll conclude with the largest fireworks show in the Hartsville, Florence, Darlington, and surrounding areas. In the past few years, the city of Darlington has contributed funds for the fireworks. Your community residents and course would appreciate the generosity again this year to ensure we can continue to provide this exciting event free of charge. And I included the invoice in there too, so you can get it.
If you might have any questions. It is my understanding, if I remember correctly from last year, that it was supposed to be added as a line item to your budget so that we wouldn't have to continue to ask for the funds every year. I may have been mistaken about that, but I thought that that's what came from our executive director last year, that it was going to, and I believe it was Mr. Payne, who is no longer with you guys, who, who had told us that. So if not, it's fine, we'll keep, we'll keep coming and begging for it every year to continue to provide this event free for our community. It's been very, very well received that we've been able to reach out and not only the fireworks show, which is the biggest show in our area, but to now have the support from other, other businesses in the community that allows us to provide those rides free for those children. So certainly appreciate anything you give us, at least cover the fireworks, but we will take more if we will, provided.
So if I remember correctly, didn't we create a committee? That's supposed to handle this? And all these bids are supposed to go into that folder for the committee?
We have, we have created such a committee, but also last year, I think the city did it as a part of its budgeted process. So at this point in time, we have, we aren't in the budget yet, so...
But I don't think we did it part of our budget thing, because we voted separately afterwards, and they gave them that 12,000 dollars, remember? It was not a part of the budget.
I gave, we gave 12,500.
But that was, the committee did their, did their job and issued the money, and then they came back afterwards and asked again for the, for additional funds.
I didn't think they applied, they didn't apply to the committee because they came straight to the city.
No, they got money from the committee.
If I could, I've been with the chamber for a couple of years. We previously have gotten money from H-Tax, if, if my understanding is correctly, but because of all the hoops and things that we've had to go through, it was made a decision, I believe, two years ago, that that money would no longer be coming from any kind of tax fund, but rather would come from the city directly, which is why you pay...
It'll come from our, it'll come from our H-Tax.
Yes.
The difference, the difference is that committee that we chose to allot so much money for them to give out, the chamber is a different entity. DDRA is a different entity. DDRA, Chamber of Commerce are all arms out there, just the only purpose of the chamber, the only purpose of the chamber is to support the city of Darlington. The only purpose of DDRA is to support the city of Darlington. The Pilot Club has a different group out there, okay? They let, they, they come in from the racetrack and they ask for money for the pageant, that's, they're, they're not here to support Darlington, they're here to support the pageant, they're here to support different things of what they're working on. The only thing that y'all work on is to help us, okay? That's why they weren't put into that list of money that we would allocate you for. So things happen in the city of Darlington, when we have the pilot, when the, we have the Sweet Potato Festival going in my realm, it says, "oh, y'all Darlington had a great thing." Well, Darlington didn't do that. Sweet Potato Festival, Pilot Club, those ladies did that, okay? And they represent us, Darlington Chamber. Whatever you do out there, good or bad, it represents us. And so, and we say, "we're here to help them." So I feel like we should...
The chamber, the chamber was in that list. And if we can go back, if the city manager can go back and find that, that list of people that we gave a donation to, the chamber was a part of that list. Because I remember giving, questioning it when we gave it to them the second time.
We only received any one time, it was 12,500. There could have been two payouts, because... We only received any one time. It was twelve thousand five hundred. There could have been two payouts because what we've done in the past two years was we have already paid for half of those fireworks right now. We've already paid the sixty two fifty. And you reimbursed us for that previously. And then when we were getting ready to pay the remaining balance, you paid them directly for us, if I remember that.
Ever you're up in here with you?
I just, what I wanted.
But it was a total of twelve thousand five hundred.
The committee as a result of that. The chamber, as I remember, it was sounded like it was gonna be automatic, but you took this route to, because we established that so that when we were giving the money, because that was all coming from this hospitality thing. So the committee, so that other other organizations would submit their proposal or something to that. But the chamber, because you all had always been coming to it, it was just kinda like automatic. But it did come out of that committee as the committee as the, where because a certain amount of money was allotted to that committee. Forty fifty thousand dollars, something like that.
We like that much.
No, I know, but it, because it's probably a lot more, but I was just saying, it it wasn't a particular problem. When they came back, they told told us who, how they distributed the money and so.
Then the chamber came back again and said, we needed money for fireworks.
Right.
We voted separately and gave the other monies for fireworks.
Yeah, it was some kind of, but you know, I I just, you know, we're not gonna not do it because, gosh, we look forward to that.
I'm not saying not doing that. I'm saying it needs to be submitted under that committee and let the committee do their job. That's the point of electing the committee.
Yeah. Is that still functioning? That maybe we might need to ask that?
The Hospitality Tax Committee, is that the one you all went through before the Hospitality Tax?
It was called something like the Great Committee or something like that.
Because I remember.
But there was six people on that committee and they were supposed to, whoever wanted, wanted to solicit funds for the city, send in their proposal, brought in their proposal, they were turned over to the committee. We gave them a certain amount of money and they allocated money to different, all those entities that asked for a donation from the city.
I remember being in a meeting and having a representative come and talk about that. So I guess the big question then is, is that form already online? What's the deadline for them to apply?
Correct. We will do anything we need to do if there's another way we need to do it. We are just not aware of another way. This was the way we've we've done.
I think as a practical matter, those applications have to go in in the August, September timeframe and they come back in the December timeframe and say, this is what we are recommending to the city and the city does. But this falls into a different timeframe. Ma'am?
Say that again?
My memory was that that committee has to have presentation of them maybe in the September, August, September timeframe. And they meet and discuss and take the applications and then they come back and and report to us their recommendations. But right now, you did not, you did not submit anything.
But I if I remember correctly, there was something put out in the in the newspaper or ad or something that said, if you were interested in getting a donation from the city, submit your application. And the application was provided upfront and provided through the paper or however they did it for citizens of those groups to know that if they wanted funds from the city, to submit your application.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I don't think that has been done by, see, the manager was supposed to do that, sure. And I don't think it was done.
Honestly, well, that I remember.
That was already done and we got to do it again for the following year, but DDRA and Chamber were excluded from that.
No, they weren't excluded because they got money through that committee. They were not excluded.
But through lottery code, that's fine.
They were not excluded. No, they wasn't. If you print out the list, if you, the city manager, if you can go back and um find that list, maybe you'll see who got the money. You will see who received funds, because they did receive funds. They were not excluded.
So I think basically what these ladies really need to know is how do they go about, is there a form they need to complete?
An application or application. Can you make a motion tonight to approve for this year's Freedom Fest? And if there is a way for us to have to approve, ask for funds going forward, we would welcome that information for next year's event.
So if we make an exception for you tonight, then we have to make a sense where anybody else would come up and say the same thing.
I understand what you're saying, Councilback, because we had no idea that this was a way that we were supposed to be doing. And we keep notes as well. Every time we've gone to any council meeting, we have always gone to council to ask for these funds for Freedom Fest. As far as I'm aware, and I like I said, I've been the treasurer and I'm now current chairperson, we have not had to go to a separate type of committee. We also have not received funds separately from the one time that you guys paid out for the benefit of the fireworks of the Freedom Fest.
So who was the chairman of the, who was over the um chamber before you to go?
Do you mean who was our previous employee or do you mean who was our previous chairperson?
Who's your previous chairperson?
The the prior chair to me is Howard Nettles.
And Howard Nettles was on council.
Correct.
So Howard Nettles knew the process. He was on council. He voted for it the same way we did. So he knew the process.
And the process was that they were not included?
Yes, they was.
I'd like to make a motion to approve twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the Darlington's Chamber of Commerce for the two thousand twenty-four fireworks.
How much?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Oh, I thought you said four twelve. It sounded like four.
Oh, I didn't say four. Twelve thousand five hundred.
Before we go, there there was a discussion about that committee because of the timing of the fund. There was something about that as a, and something had to be done of before, because the committee was put together kind of late and the the funding was, you had to apply. There was all, there was a lot of discussion, but um.
I'd like to say.
I have a question, more point of information, if you don't mind. If you are voting on this tonight, where do you intend on taking this twelve five from? What line?
It comes from the hospitality.
Hospitality.
Okay, so you take it from the hospitality fund, but they would be exempt from having to do the application opposed to everyone else or?
Yeah.
Well, they were last time. If you want to put them in the bucket, next time, next time, we can discuss that.
I'm just simply asking.
We need to make a discussion. We need to know, we need to decide whether to make it this way or to.
But we got a motion on the.
We need to increase the amount that we've given.
The twenty-five thousand dollars that was.
I think James Cook was the chairman.
Yeah.
The twenty-five thousand dollars for DDRA for the for the events was excluded also.
About doing it properly next year.
We need to vote on this motion.
We've got a motion and a socket, so I guess it's time to call.
Mr. Backus, Mr. Miller, Ms. McRaven. I gave the motion. He get a second.
Yeah, Mr. Miller did.
I gave the motion.
He did the motion.
I made the motion.
And I think.
Mr. Stickers, you do the socket. Mr. Miller voted. Ms. McRaven?
No, because they not follow proper procedure.
Ms. Reed, thank you. Please make note that Mrs. Backus voted no. Thank you.
And, excuse me.
Resolution for updating the City of Darlington employee handbook?
Thank you.
So that mean any citizens who want money, just come ask for it. You don't have to follow procedure.
I'm also.
Just come ask for money. You don't have to follow the proper procedure.
We're playing for Ryan Park, talking out.
No, I'm asleep when I want.
You're supposed to speak on this. Ms. Mary, Mary, are you supposed to speak on the resolution of the?
I'll do that.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, okay. I didn't have a name, son.
Good evening, folks. No. Glad to be here. I'm your interim city manager, Bill Taylor. I've met most of y'all. And I've worked with several of you in the past when I used to work for the Municipal Association. Uh, this is my third day on the job and glad to be here. And one of the first things I tried to do when I came the other week was to look at some actions that council had made and just make sure that we're up to snuff. As some of you have talked about, sometimes all of those decisions of council aren't reflected in the documents that we have. And so one of the things I saw was that last year, y'all were very generous with the employees, offering three new official holidays. And so what we wanted to do is make sure the employee handbook was amended to reflect those. And I think you have a little short slip there which indicates the three that y'all approved last year. And this is just a formal resolution to include that in the employee handbook. So is there any discussion? This is something you've already approved.
Okay. So what we just need to.
We didn't approve it, I think. She said we just did it.
Right, you do need to approve a resolution to change the employee handbook.
I think a motion that we modify or update the city employee handbook to add as additional holidays. President's Day, Juneteenth holiday.
Ms. Backus? This is Reed, Stig, and Mrs. Carey. Thank you. A proposal of recruiting new city managers?
Okay, one of my first duties as your interim city manager is to try and work myself out of a job. I am, I am trying to hopefully lead you into a direction of trying to hire a new city manager. It's a very timely issue and certainly there are always times when you lose your leadership and you're looking for new talent. I will say this, there is a lot of new young talent in this whole state. I was working with the Municipal Association for almost ten years, but my, I did most of my work in the town of Charal for about twenty-nine years. And I've seen a lot of good talent, whether they're department level or whether they're assistant managers across the state. And you may have ideas on individuals that might be interested in this position because Darlington is a very unique community and you offer a lot. Just because you have somebody in mind, I don't want y'all to be tunnel vision and shortsighted by overlooking people that might be out there that might suit your needs. So one of the things I've I've tried to do is to give you some options. The main thing is develop a recruitment plan. You know, you've got to decide, where are we gonna advertise? Are we just gonna advertise locally? I hope not. How do you source and recruit this? How best are we gonna screen these candidates? And once we screen them and identify them, how are we gonna interview them and then select them and make an offer? There are a lot of management, executive management consulting firms out there where they will actually help recruit top executives for local, city, county type managers. These come at a cost, but they do have a broad range of people who are looking for these type of positions. But they will run you probably around twenty thousand dollars to do that. Certainly, I've indicated in here some options for advertising, certainly the local and state newspapers, the Municipal Association of South Carolina website. The Municipal Association and also the County Association offer website at no cost to the town. And there are some online places like indeed.com. You see that on TV. But I've given you some proposals from other, some of the executive search firms. But what I would like to propose is a very aggressive timetable for this. What I'm talking about right now is. I I went back and looked at the previous ad which was done, I guess, three years ago when you hired John. And I improvised on that and improved that a little bit. But the timetable that I'm looking at really is, if you approve, we would post this notice on the International City and County Management Association site, which is another site that offers postings for free, along with the Municipal Association site, the County Association. We could start that as early as next week. Probably set a due date for mid-May, late May, like May twenty-second, is one I picked, where we would get resumes and applications. Now, following that, I know when I worked at the association, we had several city managers on staff. And we were asked occasionally by different cities who were recruiting, if we would review those applications that they came in. And we did that. What we would do, we don't recommend an individual, but we will go through those applications, narrow it down to the few that meet your qualifications, meet your standards. And we would tell you that these are the people that you should enter. We we feel like those, these people could be a very valuable employee for you and are willing to do that. So if you did that and had the association, County Association will do this as well. But since I'm more familiar with the Municipal Association and it's a municipality, I know that we could review those, have those reviewed with recommendations coming back to the council. And then by mid, early May or early June, you could actually do the interviews. And once we get to the interview stage, however you choose to do that, whether it's the entire council, the committee, or a, I I've been involved in interviews where you've had local residents and local citizens or business people involved as well. But let's just say that it's just gonna be the council. You do the interviews and you make the offer and hopefully you would have somebody in here by late summer. Certainly during the summertime, if you have a manager with family, it's often a good time for them to relocate before their children start getting into the school. So I know this is a very aggressive timeframe, but I just wanted to lay this out for you so that you can look at it and see if you thought that might work, if you have any misgivings on that or have any concerns. I think, you know, you kind of strike while the iron is hot. I am here to try and work with, and I've been enjoying getting to know the staff and learn the operations. And you've got some real talented folks that are working here. And they're doing their best to try and fill me in on all the things that are happening here. So any, any suggestions or questions or comments?
Well, I'm glad that we have, you've taken this approach so that we can get this done right and try to get this done. I was looking at all of the these organizations that does all that.
Recruitment, yes.
Yeah. I like the way we did it before, seemed like it was when we were overwhelmed with so many, we sent it to the Municipal Association and had you vet it. And send it back to them without this cost.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, without that, without the cost. That's what I was looking at.
Right.
It seemed like.
And they will do that again.
So that, I'm, I'm, they only and I was looking at, because I, I suspect that we would have a number of applicants.
I think we'd be best to do it that way than if a bugger comes out empty or a bunch of bad applications, then we can then pursue maybe a consulting company that we may have paid.
Well, and and the the second page on there is basically the description with an ad. And you'll note where on the, basically, the next to the last line on the second page on the deadline. on the deadline to apply, we list in here the position is open until filled. It will remain open until filled because that gives you an opportunity. If you're not satisfied with the applicants that are coming here, then you can ditch it. I've seen and we've seen at the association, anytime there is a southern opportunity, we have a lot of snowbirds that want to retire and move down here. And so, you get flooded with people from the Midwest and the Northeast. But again, I want you to understand what you're trying to do is set the tone for this city moving forward. I would encourage you to look at some of the younger candidates out there. They're very trained, very dedicated, and very willing to be a part of your community. You don't know what it means when you have a new manager come in with a family, like raise their children in the community, and they've become a part of the community. And that's a, that's a big opportunity for them to spread the good word about where they live. So, any direction from Mayor and Council on this?
I said, pull speed ahead, Mr. ... That's me.
I'm fine with it.
Do we need any...
We'll just proceed.
We proceed as you have outlined.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
And we'll make that as a motion and we'll include that?
Can you have a motion too, brother?
I made the motion that we accept the proposal for recruiting a new manager, a new city manager that was submitted by our interim city manager, Bill Taylor.
I'm secretary.
Ms. Craven? Ms. Becker? Ms. Kieran?
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Mrs. Jones, building department budget review.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So, I looked over, how are y'all? So, I looked over my budget and pretty much, my budget is much more simple than the police department, the fire department, and water and sewer. And so, everything, with the exception of postage and demolition, and then salaries, which can make it in there, but even that increase goes as well. So, postage, I went over and kind of trended what the number of violation notices that were sent out as far as zoning ordinance goes and different things that we sent out. At any rate, it's about a fifteen percent increase on average from one year to the next. So, I added a fifteen percent increase in there. Right now, postage is a thousand dollars. Right now, we've spent probably close to twenty-five hundred. So, that will need to go up to thirty-one hundred realistically, thirty-two hundred realistically in order to not go over budget in that area. And then demolition, so if we take down everything that is currently on the demolition list and then include through four other houses that have been condemned since then and the two commercial properties that are on there, all told, along with the other thing that comes out of that line item is overgrown properties when we have to get it third party cut. It's going to be, you would need to put a hundred and six thousand dollars into that line item to take everything down. So, in that, I'm saying, when we talk, you know, we have these budget talks and you guys decide on how much you're going to put in that line item, know that if it's less than a hundred and six, everything's not coming down. A lot of that is going to be eaten up. On average, it's about eight properties residential. On average, it's about fifty-five hundred dollars to get the houses taken down. So, a large chunk of that budget will come from the two commercial properties that are on there. One of those properties, we've already done the asbestos testing.
Which exit station are you talking about?
The twelve oh one, South Main Street, where it has all the cactus in the middle of the little... Yes, sir.
Remember hunters?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
On the houses that you're demoing, are we getting reimbursed?
We are billing for that. We have, we have received, several properties have paid it off. I mean, it goes to the taxes and gets added to the taxes.
In rural street, what house were we talking about on...
That's the, that's the commercial property. There's apartments on the backside of Andrew's Barber Shop.
Oh, okay. He still owns that?
I don't think so. Didn't it get sold as a tax sale?
Well, it got sold at tax sale and then it got redeemed. And then I think it's gone back to being sold at tax sale.
And the Andrews that was involved with that is now deceased. It has a half-brother, I think.
Right, and I think it's, it might have been in probate the last time I looked at it. Yes, sir.
But that is to be demolished.
It needs to be. The roof is falling in.
And what's the status, what's the deal with that old Coca-Cola building?
The, that currently has the art on it?
Yeah.
They just closed on that, the new owners just closed on that. So, I imagine they have their architects and engineers working on going forward with their plan.
So, what do we, what do we need to do?
It was just for information purposes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Can you go ahead and get with Mr. Taylor and see if that's working? Put that in.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jane, discussing the vacant building ordinance. I think last time you brought up and then asked everybody to kind of decide. So, she would have a clear, cut view of what to say, what to do, and she'd be given all kind of variations if I'm speaking correctly.
So, we have, I have been getting some, in the last couple of days, some variations. I sent an email to everybody last night. Ms. Craven requested some information and so, the information was sent to all the councils so everyone would have the same information across the board, so...
I didn't get it, so you don't have a hard copy, right? I mean, I didn't look at my email.
I do have a hard copy of the...
So, I consider what the email was, I'm sorry.
Well, the email has the ordinance.
Yeah.
It has every letter, like it has the original letter that went out. It has the property plan. It has the vacant property registration form. It has the thank you for complying. It has I've inspected your property and you do qualify or you don't qualify. So, pretty much every letter, template letter that has come out of the office in regards to the vacant property registration was sent to everyone. To include the hundred and fifty-eight letters that were sent, I'm sorry, a hundred, a hundred and fifty-eight, I believe, letters that were sent. And then in the left-hand column, it had how many people registered, how many people were on hold, how many, I think it was twenty-five that were occupied, how many remained vacant, and how much, how many, how much fees we collected from the vacant property registration was all in that email. So, but in looking at the vacant property registration, the biggest thing, the biggest concern that people have had is the residential side.
Yes.
And, and so, it has been, two different options have been thrown out there. One, to remove the vacant, the residential portion of the vacant property registration. The other, other side is to keep the residential but separate it from the commercial. So, you'd have requirements for the residential side with its own set of fees and commercial, the commercial side with its own set of fees and requirements. And part of that reason is, so, the commercial side, they need to get it filled. We need to get them in there. We need to get it rented. We need to get it renovated. We need to revitalize part of that master plan to revitalize our city. It's, it's got to happen. And then in the residential side, you know, we have, some people have, it's air property and it's the grandmother's house and they are keeping it up while it may not have utilities. The grass is being cut, you know, it doesn't appear to be vacant, so, and Councilman Gardner had mentioned about getting into it to inspect it for safety reasons. And so, I explained to him that if there's no utilities, because part of the vacant property registration that didn't actually get into the ordinance was talked about was if it has utilities and it, and the grass is cut, then it's not considered vacant, even if it's not occupied. Where I think that a commercial structure, if it's not occupied, it's not occupied, it's vacant. A residential structure, if they're cutting the grass, you know, if they're maintaining the property, then it could be, you know, considered not necessarily occupied but not in the vacant property registration. But that would be something for council to decide. So, I think that, you know, if you guys can seriously take a look, you know, at what kind of fees, because it's also been talked about, the fees are a little...
Steep.
Steep.
Well, the fees need to be steep because if people are allowed these things to sit here...
Well, and I, and I understand that, but I think that...
And we tore building down, we tore a house down that from the front looked good and from the internet looked good. And I got rid of it because we were tearing it down, but it had holes in it, wore all it, and it was, it was just wasted. When, if it had had electricity and power on it and water on it and everything else, then you would have a better chance of that house being maintained. But if a person's just cutting the front yard and worry about putting anything inside of that house, then you have no houses continuing to decay.
Well, and it's something that Councilman Gardner had said is that, you know, one of the things that wanted to be looked at as far as the inspection goes is that if you do have power on it, that it could be a safety issue because if there's exposed wires and such as that. And so, I said, I told him, I said, but if you guys aren't considering it, you know, how, depending on how you want to define it, if it doesn't have electricity on it, it doesn't matter if it has exposed wires because there's no juice going to it. So, it's not a safety issue from that point. But, but to get to have an inspection in order to look at it from a structural standpoint and whether or not it's a safety issue from a structural standpoint is certainly important. But, you know, you can have somebody that says, okay, because in the, in the, in what was, the discussion that was had said, if it has power and if it has utilities and grass is cut, then it's not considered vacant. And the answer to that was, that's correct, it's not vacant. It would not be considered a vacant property. Well, if you put power on something and it is actually vacant, nobody's actually occupying it and we're not considering, considering that to be a vacant property, then that is a safety issue. Because you could have exposed wires, you could have, you know, different things going on. Not, it's not properly grounded and all, you know, there are problems then. So, that's where, you know, we need to come as a council together and look at the ordinance as it's written, look at the fees as they are. I'm not saying don't have it. And I in fact think that for commercial properties, you know, changing it from four hundred to five hundred dollars in like the first year, four hundred, from four hundred to five hundred the first year and then incrementally up five hundred dollars a year and capping it off on the sixth year at three thousand dollars and three thousand dollars every year after that. I think that's one, it's attainable for a commercial property. It's something that you can do. But I think that having a four hundred dollar a year for the first year and then the second year is three thousand dollars and, a thousand dollars and three thousand dollars for a residential property, when you, when you look at the community that we have, you know, you're asking, you're asking somebody to pay more for their, for a vacant property than they are for their taxes. You know, so I think that coming up with something, and if they want to do an inspection and it drops at two hundred dollars and we're able to go in there and see, you know, see what's going on, or, you know, it did prod people, twenty-five people, to get their properties fixed and occupied. So, I think that the ordinance in and of itself is not a bad thing. I think it's actually a very good thing to help move our community forward. But I think that it has to be something that we need to balance the needs of the city in, in growing our city and revitalizing our city, but also keeping in mind where our community is as, as far as our citizens, you know, and, and being able to marry those two together. So, it's something that will encourage our citizens to fix their homes or to do the things that they need to do. And if they can't, for whatever timeframe that they can, that you give them a fee to pay or you do an inspection, you know, and pay a lesser amount. But, I mean, if we're asking them for five hundred and a thousand, that's a thousand dollars in that year that they could have done a renovation. Part of my, the packet that I give to council every month is, you know, this is how much residential investments, i.e. from permits, you know, for re-roofing and additions and, you know, whatever renovations that they're doing and how much in commercial, you know, and our residents are already paying millions of dollars so far this year.
My understanding was if I have a house and I'm not working on it or working on it or whatever, it's five hundred, four hundred fee first year?
Four hundred dollars.
Four hundred.
Not if you're working on it. If you have a permit on it, then you don't have to pay a vacant property.
Correct. So, if it's, if it's just Angie, Ms. Craven's house, then I just let it sit there and I'm going to come work on it later too, and here I'm coming. But I don't show no effort coming, I got to pay four hundred, correct?
Right, so what happened was, well, it wasn't part of the ordinance. So, what happened was I was having so many people saying, we're listing, I'm listing the house to sell it or I'm getting ready to renovate it. So, if they did that, they'd have to do that on the property plan and tell me when they were going to start doing it, and I would push it. So, that was one of the letters that got sent was, we're pushing it out. We pushed it out for things to be listed, we pushed it out for renovations, we pushed it out for, well, fire, fire automatically by ordinance got to push, as did snowbirds, was not vacant at all. But, you know, when stuff was in probate, you know, it got pushed out. So, they would let me know that this was happening and we would push it. And it got put on the spreadsheet, you know...
Correct. As I said, if it's in probate, I'm going to touch it, look at it, you can't find somebody. If, if I come in and say I'm fixing to work on it, I would say there should be a, the council should agree on a date, thirty days, ninety days, so that you've got a clean-cut line to say, okay, you've got nine days. Nine days, the permit's not been pulled, then you're going to be fined. They come in and pull the permit and there still should be another date, okay? We've got houses out there, we're going to work on them. There's still no work being done on them. You should have a clear-cut line, no work's been done by a certain date, by that date, three months, a year, whatever period of date is, that way she's got a clean-cut line, this is what has been done. And then after that period of time, if nobody's still doing anything, if I've got a house and I'm not doing anything to it and not told you anything about it, I should be fined that four or five hundred dollars. And a years later, a year, one year later, if nothing is still...
It's not fine though, it's a registration issue.
Registration, okay. Another year later, still nothing has been done to it, they should be fined. They're not going to do anything to it, they're going to let it still sit there deteriorate.
It's an annual registration, yes, sir.
Right, they should, they should be, they should have to pay again because they're going to continue to let it sit there. And they're in another country or else...
I agree, I'm not saying...
But again, again, I think that she, what we're asking for, again, that's what happened under her workshop, we need to give her lines to where she knows where to draw it at so that there's no, there's no question.
Okay. Here's my...
Well, actually, I would really like for you guys to discuss the fees.
Right. Here's my thing, even all of that, because we do not know the reason folk are not... If they have indicated that they have worked on it sometime and then next year they're not, we don't know what's going on there.
Right.
So, I feel, when it comes to this residential, we got to do something different. I like the way you said, if it is where they, you, whatever the conditions are that you outline that says that there's not vacant, we need to look at that.
That's what, yes.
We need to look, look, look at those things.
I would like...
Commercial, if there's not doing anything, go with the, with the fees that you outlined. And that sounds like, because it's commercial and they downtown like, I'm looking at the ones that had the fire and this and that on the square. I came through that the other day, I said, this is...
Just like hers, you can't, I'm assuming you can't go and say, oh, you're in the middle of thinking now, you're getting, you're registering, there should be a period of time when that comes out, okay?
Yeah, but I haven't heard about it.
Yeah, that's outlined in the, in the ordinance, you know...
But if the building, there are other buildings I'm not going to call right away, but we know they're empty. They've been empty since I, before I was mayor and they're still sitting empty. They should, and I know in certain circumstances, if they were pushed, they would do something about it. But I'm not going to do anything about it because they're not being pushed. And then their, their buildings are just still sitting in instead of our town and we can't grow because it's empty and it's a, and it's a mess.
Right. Now, in those situations, maybe so, but then we need to be clear so we can help our citizens who are trying to maintain and do not, and need not have to deal with that registration. I mean, is this when they are maintaining their property?
We need to discuss that at a workshop.
Yeah.
But we're only after, so the public knows, we're only after people, if you're doing something with your property, we're all for you. The ones that are just allowing to come in and sit and hibernate and do nothing with the property.
And that should be our fault.
Right, so that's what I'm asking for you guys to think about is the fees.
Well, the commercial, what you find, we stay with what we have now.
Yeah.
I don't think that, I'm not in agreement with that residential fine fee that you're charging.
The registration.
I don't agree with that at all.
So that's what I'm
I think that's unnecessary.
So tonight, we're just asking, what you find was our big reward with commercial?
They're talking, you keep cutting everybody out. Everybody talking, you keep cutting us off.
I just asked you a question, okay?
I'm talking to you.
Go ahead, talk to you.
Ready to say?
The floor is yours, it's back to you.
Trying to be smart, right? Don't clean that gym. Um, the registration fee for that residential, I don't agree with that. I think that residential fee is ridiculous, because you got citizens who has one or two, maybe three properties. I feel like as long as their yard is taken care of, the yard is clean, the property is clean, that fee, I think is just unnecessary. I can understand that we need to do something about commercial properties, I'm, that's understandable. And I'm not saying no crazy two and three thousand dollar fines for commercial property, I don't think I agree with that either. But I do believe that we need to do something to try to move our commercial properties along. But I rode through downtown a week ago and I think that place called, what was it called? Something by the creek or something.
Oh.
It's no longer there. So it is not like, regardless of whether it is vacant buildings next door or vacant buildings not next door. It's still not surviving downtown because they're gone. So I don't even think the vacant property is the reason they're gone. So I don't think that's what, we can hold that accountable. But I don't agree with the residential side of that.
So that's what I'm asking, Mayor Boyd mentioned having it as a work session to come up with an idea. So I'm asking for you all to put, you know, pen the paper and figure out what criteria would you guys like for residential buildings? What criteria would you like for commercial buildings to be defined as vacant? And also what fees would you like to go along with that criteria, so?
Exactly, I wanna ask this and kinda go off my, I don't know what she said, because this is what I'm finding. My neighborhood, there is a lady has several properties. In her neighborhood where she lives, she keeps all that up. But in my neighborhood, it's not being done, so that's, those are the ones that I said you gotta break out, break out some kind of rule.
Absolutely.
Because I can't get them to keep it up, I mean, and that gets on my nerves, okay, a little bit. So I would love to see that though.
What you mean, are you saying overgrown lots or are you saying?
I'm saying homes. Since they just, yeah, the houses there, it's kinda rotting down, you know, it's just kinda dilapidated. But they keep the yard cut up, but I know there's no, no utilities there. Every now and then, when the grass is up to the steps or something like that. But I see it now, I go through kinda on a regular basis, say today, own two or three homes that, now, now, I'll take you through so you can see what I'm talking about. But anyway, yeah, I just said, that's my, what we have to outline as far as residential, but I do not
And there are jurisdictions in some areas that have similar ordinances that we can also look at to see if we would like to, you know, extract some of their ways of doing it and see if it would be helpful in our jurisdiction.
Well, thank you for sending that information, I request, appreciate that. Reading all of that, I saw there were several people had, they submit a plan, it gets on hold. But at what point, just because they submit a plan and say they're gonna do something, at what point do we say? Because I mean, if there's a building on here that I know that is commercial property, they obviously submitted a plan, it's on hold, it's three years later, nothing's been done.
Absolutely.
So at what point are we gonna say?
So here's, right, so here's the problem, here's the problem that we ran into and why there's things that are on there that say on hold and should have been ninety days, because it is ninety days. When it's a ninety day hold, we've received
Just ninety.
Right, unless they come back and say, this is what the, you know, this is what it is, my house is under contract, I know it's expired, can we push it? Sure, when's your closing date? We'll push it, right? So we do, you know, ninety days is not necessarily a hard and fast rule, it depends on the circumstance. What, you know, how long it takes this prop, this estate to go through probate is not the same amount of time it's gonna take for this estate to go through probate. Right, so, you know, it is ninety days at least gets the ball going. But the reason why this ordinance has been put on hold as a whole is because every time I tried to enforce it, I had somebody come to my office and we shouldn't do it for this one, or this one is for that one, and this one is for this one, and that one is for this one. And I can't do an ordinance that way. It either is or it isn't. We either are or we aren't. We're gonna either enforce the ordinance that's on the books, or we're not gonna enforce the ordinance that's on the books. But if we have an ordinance and we're going to enforce it, we're gonna enforce it across the board. And so that's why I'm coming to council to say, let's look at the ordinance, let's get everyone on one same page. Let's figure out what criteria we're gonna go by, let's get the fees into the ordinance, let's do, let's get it all. How it's gonna most benefit our, the jurisdiction and the citizens, get that passed. So when I enforce it, you guys can support what it is that I'm enforcing.
So even if they submit a plan and tell you they're doing renovations, it's still only supposed to be ninety days? That they should at least pull the permit in at ninety days? And if they haven't?
Then they get a bill.
How many times do they get to come back in?
Well, they get a bill. They get a bill unless there's some kind of extenuating circumstance. But we can't have extenuating circumstances for five years or for six months or for, you know.
That's what I'm saying, she needs a set rule, because you're gonna have, there are people out there, they will come in and say, I'm gonna work on this house or building. And they'll pull the permit and then all of a sudden she nearby by and she knows, I know, and everybody in the world knows, they are working on it, they are gonna work on it.
But that doesn't matter?
Definitely they're not working on it, they did a little titty bit and now it's it. So there should still be another, for her to be able to have a straight line, we've got to be able to give her a date, such and such. Again, if she comes back in and she knows it was in probate or some other circumstances and we walk up and say, Sheila, why did the house torn down or fined or whatever, billed, okay, and then she can say, well, this was in probate or whatever, she's the legitimate reason for why it was extended out.
I just also want to add to this that we as a city can have to be aware that we are contributing to the vacancy because we own several buildings ourselves that have been vacant for years.
Yep.
So now unless we plan on charging ourselves a fee, right? We need to really
So what we ask, can these bills do, can we start doing something? Okay, so we'll come back at the workshop and we'll ask this out.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Adam Kaye, approval bids for purchase and installation of three insulation valves at the corner of Pearl and Edward Avenue.
Good evening, we're here tonight to talk about a repair that's needed at the intersection of Pearl and Edward Street. The old valve that's there is leaking and we cannot get it to stop. The main lines there are too dangerous to repair under pressure. We've asked a company, several companies for bids on insertion valves. Those are valves that are inserted into lines that are under pressure. And Jonathan's received three and I'll let him talk about that.
Okay.
We got bids from Holiday, I'm sorry, Mr. Reed, what'd you say?
Oh, no, I was just saying, do we have that up here? The bids, the one?
It's on your book.
Yeah. That's over here.
It left out tonight, it wasn't in the packet.
It wasn't in the packet?
It wasn't in the packet, it was left tonight, it's in what was on the desk tonight.
Okay, I see it.
Yes, ma'am, we have three bids from three contractors, one of the lowest bid being Holiday Utility Services.
Holiday?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so these, Holiday, what is this, chlorinator and wells?
Yes, yes.
Of the ones, okay.
No, M and J Service, huh, M and J Services.
Oh, M and J with something else in that tank?
Wells or something.
Wells or something else.
I got these three.
We'll get it worked out. Oh, Holiday came in with the lowest bid. We can't repair these lines because we can't turn them off. And it's a six inch line with a four inch line teed off of it and the valve is bad. So we have no way to turn, turn the water off, it's just too much water to try to fix live. So we need to get some, someone in to insert a valve in a live line to isolate the six inch line and the four inch line in order to remove the leaking, the leaking valve.
Each one of them, or Holiday can do it while the line's still in service?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, they only, they only have to close the wedge in the line two thirds, so actually the service will never, never stop.
Oh, okay, that's a lot of grace. How long would it take?
No, ma'am, that should
With that? But it's not.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're planning to do this at night, probably on a Friday night, may, if I can get the contractor to agree to it. Starting at like six, seven, something like, probably more along with the seven, because we're gonna have to detour traffic all the way around this intersection out here. But we're gonna try to make it as least, the least disruptive as possible.
Okay, well, it's time. I don't think we need to waste time on that.
We have to clear the Pearl Street or?
Yes, sir. Just a little, there's a valve about three feet off the sidewalk.
Is that something that our hot box will be able to fix or is that too large for that and we'll have to get a contractor in?
That's possible. It's possible, but it's probably gonna be too large, it's gonna be a pretty big repair. And this cost too, isn't the complete cost, this is just a valve. And we have to also install some parts, devices, they're called Megalog and the new one is called Alpha Valve and we're gonna have to install these ourselves. We're probably looking at another three thousand five hundred to four thousand five hundred for those parts. We have a couple of those parts on hand for emergencies, so it's a matter of restocking our surplus pile and there'll be a little bit of pipe, we'll have, our people will be involved, so we'll have fuel and overtime at night and other things, buffs of the tug. This is just for the insertion valves.
So that you all will be able to handle it yourselves without having
We will, and we'll do it at the same time so that we don't disrupt the traffic and service and it's probably gonna be an all night long kind of thing.
It may be, but what gets me though, is just why we get a company that can't just do it all? I mean
That's, that's all they do, they come in and insert the valve.
Insert the valve.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's something that we don't do, I mean, okay.
We don't have the apparatus to do that, it's a machine.
I'm understanding, I just, why would you thought of a company that can just do everything, whatever the parts is? There's nothing like that.
If they did everything, that bid would probably be about three times what it is, we have
Yeah, I'm, I'm not questioning that.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, it's like, let me just say, we being, we suing because, no, and I know it's not the same thing, but when it seems like we in a project that we gotta split up this company, one company doing this, we come in, then another company doing all of that, I just, it seems like after a while, it's gonna be a problem, we're gonna have to come back and do something else. And I just, so I'm asking this upfront now that I'm getting more involved in these projects that come back and we have to keep, keep coming and doing different things and we making acquisitions, so. But this is what you're telling me tonight, this is the, I guess, the quickest and the cheapest and the way to get it done.
Yes, ma'am.
John.
You should have
I said read them.
Oh, read them, I'm sorry.
But anyway
You need to put out the names of who did it. You've got, you've got Holiday Utility Services for twenty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents, which was the lowest bid. Is that Chlorinated Solutions from Hemingway for the thirty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars and eleven cent? And then Wells Mechanical Services out of Enfield, North Carolina quoted
Wells is a different, that's a different bid.
They didn't give a bid, and then M and J Services Company out of Liberty, South Carolina quoted twenty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cent. For three bids and the one bid. Could I have a motion to approve Holiday Utilities?
I'd like to motion that we approve the contract with Holiday Utility Services LLC for the installation of the two six inch insertion valves and one four inch insertion valve for the sum of twenty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bass, Ms. Reed, Seers, good.
Y'all may remember just a few meetings ago, we had Mr. Daniel Wilson come and speak with us about service contract on our elevated water tanks.
Wait one second, let me, let me announce
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
For the record.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, recommendations for contract tank maintenance program with Southern Corrosion Incorporated, Mr. Seer, go ahead.
A few meetings ago, Mr. Daniel Wilson came and spoke to us about maintenance on our elevated water tanks and offered a bid for doing so. At that time, we decided not to vote on it because we couldn't get other bids. And Mr. Boglott has gone out and found other bids on the, on apples to apples, we hope, service contracts that are as close as we can get. And Mr. Wilson came in tonight, he is the low bidder on this project and this is an item that we desperately need. This is a way to finance all the service that needs to be done to the tanks. And there are certain timelines of DHA requires for washouts and for painting and for resurfacing the interior of the, of the tanks and certain inspections that have to be done annually and then at other intervals. And Mr. Wilson and Jonathan will talk about that at length if you would, if you'd like. And we want to add this onto the budget next year as a capital item. And I'll let Jonathan and Mr. Wilson take it from here.
Ms. Bass, I don't think you were here when we talked about this the first time. Daniel spoke to all of us and we were just short the bids.
I can make sure you can speak into the mic a little more so the public
Just make sure you speak into the mic a little more so the public can, Facebook and hear you.
Yeah, we were short two bids last time for this, and, uh, I acquired those, I, I acquired one bid, I actually got no bid from another contractor, but, um, Southern Corrosion was still a little bit of, um, so we're, we'd like to enter a contract with Southern Corrosion for our tank maintenance program. And if you have any questions, I'll direct Mr. Daniel, because he is the expert.
Um, I, I just, I didn't see the, oh, okay. I was just trying to get to where the money was. What's the?
We always like to put that at the back.
At the end of it.
All of us do in these bids.
And since I didn't get it to, I'm just looking at it, so what is your, is, if you all are the lowest one, I just wanted to be able to see this.
Thanks. Thirty, go ahead, $38,600, $38,605 per year.
Per year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's for how many tanks? This is just saying that.
Two, two elevated tanks.
Just two?
Yes.
How many do we have in the city?
Two. Well, we have a ground storage tank also, but they own a service elevated tanks.
And it's not the same, we don't need those done this way, this is completely different.
Ten years from now, if we can get another tank, this first, five years from now, we have to get another tank, that's not going to be included, this price will change.
No, it's not, but then again, a new tank, adding a brand-new tank to a service contract, I assume, is a lot less expensive than adding a forty-year-old water tank to one that's, that's, uh, got forty-year-old wells and paint and, and apparatus in it. So i- i- if we add a tank, it would have to be added to the service contract, yes, ma'am? If we decide to do so.
Well, there was a lot of discussion on that, I want to, that was just the last half of eight o'clock. I know.
What was the bid price for the other, other one, I think you said the full, obviously the bid price on the other one?
It is two, $4.98.
Grab a page?
Yes.
Last page.
Okay.
You want to see other bids for the service contract, American tanks?
I see y'all, I see the thirty-eight side off.
You got it written out.
Oh, gosh, are they trying to say fifty-two?
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
Oh.
Fifty-two.
We're also one, you, you mentioned a minute ago having one group to deal with.
Yes.
We are that group.
You are that group.
You don't want, you don't want else about anything on the water tank.
Appreciate that, I do.
And so you talk about, um, I could go back and look at, because I, I wasn't sitting on this side, I think you, you last spoke about this, I don't think. Um, so, I remember this as painting, flushing of a tank, uh, are, how close are we to needing any of those services?
What would Daniel answer that timeline?
We come out and, uh, we climbed, uh, it's all in a schedule in the packet.
Yeah.
You've got that in front of you, but I'll just reference that. Um, you guys are, right now, you have some immediate repairs that are needed on the tank. There, there's a, there's a few broken patches and some different things that are needed today. Uh, actually, were needed a year ago when I climbed the tank, uh, or three years ago. Um, and it's kind of been pushed back and pushed back to get to this point, uh, if you will. Um, our schedule puts washing both of the tanks out next year, so in year two of the program. Now, understand, this is a, uh, this is a one-year automatically renewing contract, okay? We can't get out of it, you can.
Okay.
That, that's how it works, so if you come up in five years and want to get out, you do that on. Uh, we've got the coating, because of the types of coating that is on the tank, it needs to be recoded somewhere between year ten and year twelve. Now, that sounds like, hold on, why are we spending that now? Because you're paying today's dollars to get it done in ten or twelve years. If not, you're going to spend three to four hundred thousand dollars at that point to do the work. And some tanks, let me flip that around, some tanks need to be painted tomorrow, that we put under contract. And we paint them tomorrow. Then that system is on the hook to be under contract with us for ten or twelve or fifteen years until that money's recouped. It's basically a financing program.
It is a financing program for painting and maintenance in the time.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out where we are with, so when was the last time our paint, our tanks were painted?
Two thousand nineteen.
And is it, so two thousand nineteen, we've got another five years then, or same, before we need to paint another tank? Paint another tank, or?
Somewhere between seven and ten years from now, and we've got it, we've got it targeted somewhere around that ten-year mark. Um, if I remember correctly, this is.
If I'm not mistaken, y'all middle of the clickings every year, see how much is promoted?
That's exactly.
That has to be reported to DHA, and they make a decision whether or not it's the coating is needed.
Yes, sir.
They also tell us too about, um, after the inspections, upon their inspection of the photographs and the other inspection, they may require another washout at some point, if so, they have to wash it out again. Um, if, if we have a huge hailstorm, and it comes along and knocks all the paint off, unlikely. But if it works, because this is, this stuff's a really good paint, he paints it again.
If the existing coating that we didn't put on the tank fails, we're liable.
Again.
Meaning, we're assuming all of your risk for that tank, short of catastrophic acts of God, and when I say that, I mean a tornado blowing your tank out. That's a different situation. But outside of that, we're assuming all of your risk on your water tank. Prepared bullet holes, we fixed several a year, believe it or not.
So if we decide that we don't just want standard white paint, and we want to use our water tanks, like some towns, and have, you know, our Pearl, the PD, or whatever we decide we want to put there, our logo, is that an additional fee, or is that something that you all would do? Is it something you would do, and if so, it's additional fee?
It depends, you got to love that comment as a term. It, it depends, um, when you, there's two different things we're talking about, if you're changing colors, it's whether or not it'll, it'll coat over it without having to do excessive work, like, uh, we paint the same colors, or include, four colors that will cover those colors. Sometimes you may have to put three or four coats of paint on one, if you're going to go from, say, a dark blue, and you want to go all white again, or you see, that, yes, that's additional. Uh, logo changes?
Because it's just so darned.
Are additional, and especially if they're in between coating cycles, because it is significantly more expensive to get rid of the existing logo than to put on a new logo.
No logo now, really, it just says City of Darlington.
No, you've got that beautiful tree.
It is on one of them?
Yes, I was talking both of them.
On both of them?
Yes, I, I, actually, I looked it up when y'all were talking about the logos.
Yeah.
It's the tree, but you did put City of Darlington beside of the tree, which is good for a water tank.
It says City of, oh, no, it says Darlington, it says City of? Oh, no, it's okay, that's all, that matters.
Okay, but if the logo changes, it would be additional fee?
Yes.
And if we catch it, by that time, we should have a logo by the time you're saying our tanks need to be painted, so.
It may still result in additional fee, it's less of a fee. Uh, I'll just put it that way, because you want to do it in the cycle of painting. Um, we run into that a lot, because you basically have to repaint the tank to get rid of the existing. Everyone's seen a fire truck where they painted over the door the decal? You'll see that underneath it forever if you don't do it right. That's why you just can't roll over an existing logo and paint a new one, you have to actually get rid of the old logo. So, quite an extensive job.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Millie made the motion. State, state of motion.
I'll state a motion, then we approve the contract with Southern Corrosion Engineered Tank Care for purposes of our two water tank towers on Pine Street and North Main Street. As proposed, they have been there January nine, twenty twenty-four, um, submitted. For the sum of thirty-eight
six hundred.
Thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and five dollars, with subsequent premiums to be increased, about a C P R.
You have a second?
Just wait a second. Ms. McCrayton? Just a second.
Ms. Seager's that, questions, here?
Do you want to cover the work from you guys?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, what was the date for our, uh, work session, is it August, April the twenty-third?
Next Tuesday. Sixteenth is the day that we, and this.
April sixteenth?
That's correct.
So as a reminder, April the sixteenth, at six o'clock, Tuesday is our work session. And May the seventh, two thousand three, four is our regular city council meeting. Do you have a motion to adjourn for tonight?
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Second. Ms. McCrayton, second, it's all a favor, it's a bill, it's back to, Ms. Seager, very good, thank you for coming tonight.